Okay, welcome everyone to November fifteenth Town Council meeting. And everyone has reviewed the agenda. Be it resolved that we approved the regular meeting agenda for Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty-two, moved by. Councillor Pottinger seconded, Councillor Costin checked, all in favor? Opposed, carried. And if everyone has read their minutes. Be it resolved that the council, the town and Niqua approved the minutes of the inaugural meeting and the regular meeting held November first, twenty-two. The minutes of the special meeting held November fourth, twenty-two, circulated, moved by. Councillor Nodle seconded by Councillor Sisley, all in favor?
Sorry, I just clarified. In the inaugural minutes, I'm listed as being on the Board of Revision. Should I be listed as an exception to the Board of Revision?
Well, who's saying your job alone is to be the supervisor?
True, you just, so at the front of the meeting, you basically would declare conflict. Okay, I just didn't want to be listed here. So, carry on.
All in favor? Carry. All right, so we'll call it to order. Councillor Gerard, they've both been themselves. So now, called order, public hearing. Be it resolved, council, the town and Niqua do open this public hearing. Representation to variation application of V O one, two, oh, zero, zero of Michelle Gerard, representing one, zero, zero, five, four, nine, six, six, Manitoba Limited, moved by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Costin, check. All in favor? Opposed, carried.
Now, can I ask a question? Sorry, by word, we have, we have this, and we don't, we don't anymore. Like, we have the happy to call the pictures and everything? And the diagram and stuff, where do you want?
So, what, I think it's a volunteering part.
Do you have to go to the other agenda?
Go to the agenda, same. Yeah. So, go there, yeah.
Is there a way to link that so that we don't have to go back and forth? Take a separate time to do it. Thank you. I could place them in the body of the ripper, but there's always a separate.
Was Premlin still in there? I knew he was there.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, sure.
So, this is application V dash zero, one, dash, twenty, twenty-two, dash, end. Owner is zero, one, zero, zero, five, four, nine, six, six, Manitoba Limited, applicant Michelle Gerard. The proposal is a variation to allow for the maximum fence height of three feet to be increased to six feet in the front yard within the CH Commercial Highway Zone for the noted property, and which they're expecting is lot one, plan six, nine, three, seven, four, being one forty-two Main Street West. And reasoning the sport is to allow location of a material storage compound for the new commercial retail store. As part of the variation process, this application or this public hearing notice gets sent out to property owners within a minimum of a hundred meter circumference of the noted property. As of today, my office has received no concerns for or against proposal. Mr. Chaney here, he's also having.
Sure, come up, move up if you have any other questions.
Sit here?
Yep.
Yeah, my name's Allen, and I'm just representing Niqua Home Hardware just for this variance public hearing, and as a retail store, we're going to store our building materials in the compound, so three feet is kind of more practical.
So you don't step over.
Okay, if I could just go on behalf of the applicant as well, there was just some pictures submitted, just showing just of support of other properties. If anybody wants to see them, just show that there is, in the community, and various location heights.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that there are some on Highway five already. Looks normal.
What type of fence would it be?
Just channeling.
Channeling?
Yeah.
It's remain open, right?
Sit again?
If it's, you're not going to be sliding it, or it's remain open?
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
Not like the wall we allow to build on the corner of it.
So, just a question about the height, six feet. It seems really reasonable, I was just curious, what height do you start your base at? Like, there's a path adjacent to this property that we're looking to fence. Where would the, where would the height be? Is it level with the pavement?
The height, this is a very specific question, I do not know. But for the whole path, engineer give us a level, like, Jeff should know, yeah.
Yeah, like, the site, the site is provided with an engineer's drainage plan, so the fence side is consistent with, with that elevation, yeah.
With that elevation, we have to prepare the side, remove the suits, and put the gravel down, do the complex test.
One more question for Jeff, too, is because it's a corner lot, you might even consider the veterans' way approach the front of the store in some cases, and in that situation where the fence is looking to be built in, would be the rear of the building. On commercial lots, do you always use the highway as the frontage?
Not necessarily. Typically, it's just determined on what the potential averaging front yard would be. In this case, is there a future, is the potential or the future design for a road parallel to that walking path? And I guess, I guess in future height, in future site, we're giving that as the front yard in order to keep it consistent throughout to the main road. But you, you are correct, in an instance where maybe development does change it, and commercial highway goes down, veterans' way, then, then correct, veterans' way would be frontage for some properties, yes.
Just not, it's still no, this way has one forty-two Main Street, it was given to the gathers, and based on what approximately to the D F P page.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll move into adjournment. Be it resolved that the council, the town and Niqua do now adjourn the public hearing at seven, oh, eight. Moved by. Councillor Nodle, seconded by Councillor Costin, check. All in favor? Carried. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. I probably close this call, but thanks. Okay, yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, we will resume the meeting, and start with council reports.
Councillor Gerard. The Rosburn Trail Association met on November third. We met in Sandy Lake at the fire hall, and we had a really great meeting. I really appreciate Councillor Parrott, a couple years back, giving me this, this role. He did tell me, though, they really love, they're passionate about trails, where it's a long meeting, it goes into the wee hours of the night. I get home after midnight from these meetings, and it's quite intense. People are passionate about trails. So, one important thing to note is, on the Trans Canada Trail, anywhere along the trail, you're not allowed to use motorized vehicles such as A T Vs. They are permitting skidoo because it actually supports the trail, it packs down the, the snow, but A T Vs just cause a lot of damage, so they're prohibited on the trail. That being said, we're still looking, this is the year we feel that the trail will give each municipality an M O U, a memo of, of understanding, to keep the trails mowed and maintained in their area, so in their municipality and section. And that's the highlights of our meeting here, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Gerard?
Yes, on November fifteenth, or this morning, I thought we went by the watershed. I had very annual meeting, we discussed and reviewed past projects for the year. There was a few particular things of interest for the town of Niqua. Number one, we have approved the budget for the upcoming year, so with the new budget coming for watershed, previously, the rate charged to municipality was point two-five mil, about, not two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, but point two-five of a mil, a mil rate, and this year it will be updated to point three-three, because of the cost of projects that happen, so there will be an increased cost coming forward to the town. Number two, two thousand twenty, when we had our rain event, which everyone refers to as Park Lake, what started that night was a breach of water on the north end of our community that came in through Monroe, it was an area like that. There was a water structures just northwest of Cap Cartes that was damaged. It is under repair as we speak, it should be repaired ahead of spring, so it should provide some protection for the community coming forward on this, this year. As well, a lot of questions coming forward to the town about our Park Lake project. So, I would like to just put forward as maybe a recommendation, that maybe the town, we could either have a hold post with some of our watershed partners, or even the staff, they don't feel like they're totally understanding what's happening in the Park Lake project, so they'd like to be brought up to speed on that, and since we just awarded contracts, and, again, it was, there was no parameters that the town really put forward as to what Park Lake had to look like. It was one-hundred percent of what was approved under the disaster financial assistance. It is in no way reflective of any choices that the town is making in tax dollars or anything like that. It is one-hundred percent a disaster financial assistance project. But that being said, because they feel that Park Lake could have a potential impact within the watershed, and they would just like to be aware of what's going on, so. And I got a list of the projects that were completed within the whole watershed, we are one of the larger watersheds in the province, and a number of projects, and they've had a really good year on the construction, year in maintenance here, and they've spread out plenty, mainly to northwest of us, which is leading to the town of Niqua, and then trying to take care of our neighbors, and east of us can receive our water ultimately, so it was good, very good meeting this morning, very positive dialogue.
Can I just ask then, we haven't done the kickoff meeting for construction of Park Lake yet, we're applying that within the next couple of weeks. Would that be feasible to invite Rod into that, or would you like to come on behalf of the watershed and the spillway as well, to listen to what's going on, or how, would that help?
I think just, I think just to share information.
So, just share, they don't need to sit in?
Well, if they want to come to a kickoff, or if we're going to do something, you know, with the community, but I think just a, just a general reach out, just so that the watershed can share with, that all, even that all of our districts that are asking, because they want to know if there's, we've got any water control that we're going to be managing on it, or is it, you know, strictly the spillway, and, you know, I'm sure Nodle's just the spillway, but they have, they have questions, as they felt it would be better if there was, but, again, I said, like, it's a, it's a D F A project, and it is what it is, so it's, I think they just want to be brought up to speed.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Gerard, Councillor Sisley.
We had a handyman meeting Tuesday, November eighth. They went over the trips for October, there was three-hundred-and-thirty-nine trips. Everybody was pretty happy with ridership being up. There is an electrical issue with the lift on the bus, that was to be looked at, actually, before the casino trip yesterday. I'm assuming they still remember the casino trip, I did not check that. And the bus was to be safetied before the trip. There was some discussion about the safeties, there's a lack of paperwork, it's basically missing in action for the safeties, they're not in the vehicles. So, Justin is setting up the rest of the safeties, the vehicles have to be safety yearly, but, yeah, there doesn't seem to be a great paper trail for any of that, so. There was also talk about Christmas light trips, and Justin said he'd take care of organizing and coping that, so.
Okay, anyone else? Deputy Mayor, Eric.
This, this Thursday morning, we will have our clinic meeting, and we'll be electing a new chair of the committee.
All right, anyone else?
Oh, I can't give the details, but we did have one house in the community that has been offered to be used for doctors that arrived, or that they could open a room or something. The details have been sent to Pramon Health.
All right now. Okay, if there's no other reports, manager of operations, Dini.
Thank you, Mayor Hennig, frequent survey, Councillor Gerard is referencing on the Park Lake project. We did assume by this morning, as far as the last project, the bridge work is busy too, they've removed the temporary for access, where we have the culverts in place, they're still tidying that up. Everything looked satisfactory while they were completing, there's some STANTEC for representation there, inspecting, the work has been done. I believe we have a kickoff meeting next week.
It could possibly, yeah, yeah, I think next week, if not, yeah.
Next month work is beginning to start next week on that side, so you may start seeing equipment mobilized yet, but early as next week. We're going to make this, our kickoff meetings to have, yeah. Staff, our Christmas lights installed this morning, so that's nice to see. Most of our construction projects have wrapped up with COVID-19, Bill Street won't be one more in sewer there, we'll push back the remainder of the storm sewer installation until further. Contractors have completed the first leg of our hospital roof installation, so that's up and functional for our construction, continue their work on site. D F A work is still, media work is still ongoing for this year's claim, twenty-twenty-two. Now, contractors that will still be working and preparing, so we'll still be working probably into December, we're doing some expedition, prepare work. Tricor will discuss those, or about the mean regarding the other contract we've announced, and then it's that time of year budget, so please start to build the budget, punch numbers in, and see how they affect what they're in, so.
Did I, did I already say the Christmas lights are up, no?
They're up, and we'll see what they're gonna.
It's hard to believe that it's this time of year, yeah.
Yeah, staff are busy sourcing the fall material right now, we've got one, but we're not too sure if they're happy with the quality, so we'll see.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Correspondents, Colleen.
First one, I'm from the Brown Public Safety Communications Center, this is just something you receive, and we need to let you know what year two thousand twenty-three, this time, nine-one-one service agreement. So, looking at two thousand twenty-two, it was four dollars and seventy-four cents per capita, it remains four dollars and seventy-four cents per capita, the difference being, we went from four thousand six hundred ninety with five thousand six hundred eighty-five, so you're going to see a five thousand dollar increase, so nine-one-one will be paid twenty-six thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and ninety cents in two thousand twenty-three to provide the services.
It's definitely necessary. Don't think anybody will argue it, right?
Unmarked correspondence. Come and go tea Friday. Our hearts forward for the retirement of Dr. George Palm, who was an incredible facilitator for the way our medical clinic has evolved, and the positioning that Niqua has had in the medical world.
Starts at five, goes till?
Five till midnight on Friday.
I'm sorry, that's this Friday?
This Friday, yeah.
All right, municipal relations, Minister of Municipal Relations.
So, from the Office of the Minister of Municipal Relations, I'm pleased to inform you that your municipality is joined application with the municipalities in Rosedale, North Circus Lane, for the Land of the Landsdowne, for the review of the Yellowhead Community Recreation Center operations, has been conditionally approved under the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three Municipal Service Delivery Improvement Program. The assigned consultant to complete the service review is Detroit L L P, who will be in contact with the municipality shortly. The approval is conditional on a statement of work to be drafted jointly between the municipality and your assigned consultant, and submitted by December second for review and endorsement. So, this was kind of exciting news, that there's only been two intakes for this particular program, the first intake last year, we were approved, one of eleven applications to review the hand event service in Niqua, and this time, we were approved to one of nine applications to have the Yellowhead operations reviewed. We've reached out already to the board, the executive of the board of the Yellowhead, who are excited to begin this endeavor, and it is by no means to criticize or look at what could be, what has been done wrong perhaps, and we're not saying there was, this is more from the perspective of what efficiencies they can find, is there revenues they could, opportunities that could be present for them to increase the revenues and be more sustainable, is there expenditures that maybe they need to look at, you know, stopping the bleeding per se, if money is going over the window for certain things. So, this is a good review, we found after the handyman one was done as well, some simple things that are going to improve the service there, and make sure that when, for example, when they charge a ridership fee, that that ridership fee takes into account the cost of fuel that is prison over the last year. So, all of these things will be reviewed, probably taking a look at as well, you know, the users, the complement of people that called that facility, that can do the facility for many different things, and how to make that more sustainable, so this is exciting, we're going to launch this, and, and just to be clear, though, like the hand event service, Niqua, the town of Niqua is not going to be involved very heavily into this, we are the conduit for this to happen, it had to be filed by a municipality to get this to happen, so we were happy to do that, and we will make sure that we keep the pieces and the players all together to see what the results and recommendations will be.
Okay, Colleen. All right, if there aren't any other questions or concerns, we'll move into findouts. You've all received the October twenty-second financial statement, any questions or concerns? If not, be it resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ending October thirty-first, moved by. Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Pottinger, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Unfinished business, Colleen, what remediation?
So, we have STANTEC out here one day last week, just to give them some little update on where they're at, with certain contracts they're due, and the Thunderdust disaster financial assistance program for us, and I asked them to send a little summary, because it's always nice to share with the public where we're at. So, the Niqua Park Lake dam contracts were signed with the town of Niqua on that particular day they came out, and Tricor Projects Limited, who would be the contractor for that particular project. So, just to give you an idea, general summary of the schedule from the contractor would be to mobilize the equipment on Friday, November twenty-fifth, with general site preparation work beginning on Monday, November twenty-eighth. The general site preparation will include the setup of laydown areas, access ramp and route rating, and the replacement of a temporary culvert crossing, so this could be the one more easterly into the bed of Park Lake that was washed out during the two thousand twenty-two flight. That crossing necessary and essential for taking material aggregate to the south side of Park Lake, so that they can continue their works and, and start beginning what they need to with spillway. Once September, the culvert crossing is replaced at Rob Smith and Sons, we'll be able to haul in the remaining Class one thousand ripruck, and remove the out of specification Class eight hundred ripruck from the site, and best, this is done once the freeze up occurs. Construction work will continue up to December twenty-second, which will include the removal of the existing spillway and dam, along with installation of the new sheet piles for the new spillway. The contractor will have a holiday break between December twenty-second and January third, and will continue to remove the existing dam through January of two thousand twenty-three. They will then not be on site from the end of January until May fifth. The remainder of the new dam spillway construction will be completed between May fifth and September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Speaking a little bit more to that project, there's currently not a Department of Fishery and Oceans permit for the new dam spillway, they are in the process of working with that particular federal department to receive this, many questions have been posed, they didn't make, and the questions that they're trying to answer relate to fish passage and winter kill. Based on meetings that STANTEC's had with D F O, fish pass, I'm saying, a fish passage structure would not be recommended, but they require some additional information from STANTEC regarding dissolved oxygen levels during the winter periods, and STANTEC is currently preparing a response to D F O's questions, and will have those submitted this week. There is an approved D F O permit to replace the temporary culvert crossing, and as we all know, Dini's already mentioned the fact that the temporary culvert crossing at the bridge has already been, in the loop there. And as far as the Gulf Coast Project tender, later on in your agenda, we actually, the tender's closed yesterday for that, and I'm asking for a resolution to accept, move in on that tender.
All right, thank you, Colleen, any questions? Colleen? It's just exciting that we're moving ahead. All right, new business. Variation application. Okay, Councillor Gerard, himself for conflict. We heard earlier on my first variation, and so we will move with a resolution, be it resolved that we approve the variation application, V O one, two, oh, oh, uh, two, oh, two, two, of Michelle Gerard, on behalf of one, zero, zero, five, four, nine, six, six, Manitoba Limited, respecting lot one, plan six, nine, three, seven, four, at one forty-two Main Street West, to vary the maximum height of the fence from three feet to six feet in the front yard within the CH Commercial Highway Zone for the purpose of accommodating a material storage compound for the new commercial retail storage. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Sisley, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, is no agreement to go? Or Dini, I guess it's more.
Uh, so like we did last year, will we continue on to agreements with Rob Smith and Sons and Pat Baker, dividing on Silvy Mountain Avenue? Each contractor given respective some policies, I understand, lens and how to mow, and which streets will go with prior orders, but the biggest one of this would be that we just asked for some updated rate decreases to see if equipment is still relative to what they're charging the past year, so you saw some increases, which is not uncommon, you know, fuel prices in your town.
Any questions, more questions? Move to the resolution, be it resolved that we approve the renewal of contracts with D B A the Baco Service and Rob Smith and Sons, Baco Trucking Limited for the. Backhoe Trucking Limited for the removal of snow within Town and Nipewa, when required during the period of January 1st to December 31st of '23. Moved by. Councillor Nadeau, seconded by. Councillor Costinchuk. All in favor? Opposed? Period. Who is speaking agreement with 10130058 Manitoba Limited, Colleen?
I'm going to remove myself this one time.
Councillor Gerard, getting rid of himself, I don't know.
So this particular agreement, although it's a number company, this would be with the owner, basically, Sherry Hawken, and this would be the gentleman who proposed to be the, basically, west of the co-op building. So it references lot 1-6, inclusive of block 2, Plan 26984 in the southwest of 3314-15. And the agreement is to establish a certain set of obligations with respect to the development and the continued use of the subject land. So when this particular individual came forward with this project into the town, we sat down and negotiated what needs to happen based on the layout and the design of the structure, the size of the structure, and being able to meet the zoning requirements for parking and things like that. We also understood there has to be, you know, an active corridor insofar as a sidewalk. So what came about, and what we agreed to, and what we're asking you to approve tonight, is that to agree to this agreement, that they will construct a sidewalk on the subject land that shall be immediately adjacent to the structure, to be constructed on the west and south sides. It'll be 1.5 meters in width, which would comply with the standards for accessibility that was passed by legislation. And it shall run the entire length of the boundary on the west and south sides. The construction of the sidewalk shall adhere to all applicable violations of building requirements of the town. And following construction of the sidewalk, no alterations or additions to the sidewalk shall be permitted without first obtaining the town's permission. Additions and acquiring towns' consent shall include but not be limited to potting plants and soil racks. Upon completion of the sidewalk, they shall be responsible for snow removal and maintenance and repairs relating to the sidewalk, and they can request the town's assistance for maintenance of the sidewalk. If the town has courtesy to this particular property owner to provide any such maintenance or snow removal, the town shall bear no liability with respect to the use of the sidewalk by citizens nor damage to the building or the subject land, and shall indemnify the town of any such liability. As consideration for construction of the sidewalk by the property owner, the town shall allow them to establish angle parking, as shown on the schedule, which will be attached to the agreement. And the angle parking shall be located partially on the public rule amounts first averaging. The angle parking shall consist of 12 individual parking stalls. The town is hereby grant to the property owner rights and license in perpetuity where that portion of the angle parking will be located on the public rule amounts to permit them, the agents and customers, the ability to have the public parking and zoning requirements. So that is basically the agreement under, although it is binding upon any successor's entitlement, and we will be registering same as the subject property. So if you agree, we need a resolution to...
Any questions? If not, resolution reads, whereas the owners of lots 1 to 6, block 2, Plan 76984, in the southwest, 3314-15 west, are in the process of constructing a fitness facility to be known as Wavy's Fitness and Body Shop, have been communicating with the town to ensure the layout of the property and the building takes into account the requirements to install a sidewalk and identified parking stalls. And whereas the council of the town of Nipewa has successfully negotiated an agreement with 10130058 Manitoba Limited regarding the sidewalk parking requirements, as well as the obligations of each party for maintenance and repairs. Therefore, be it resolved that the council hereby approve the agreement with written registering same as indicated against the property title. Moved by. Councillor Costinchuk, seconded. Councillor Bonter. All in favor? Opposed? Period. Okay, so our last item, Nipewa Gulf Course Tender Award, Bridge Replacement and Riverbank Remediation, Colleen.
So as I mentioned earlier, we actually have in our hands the results of the tender submissions for the Gulf Course Bridge Replacement and the Riverbank Remediation. StatTech Consulting actually received five bid submissions for the above number tender. Those five range from, including GST, $970,000 to $1.2 million, basically. All of the five were deemed compliant with the bid submission documents, and by the time reduced, StatTech recommended the award to this particular project to low bid, which would be Tricor, including GST of $970,028.54.
Questions? Straight forward. Okay, resolution. Councillor Gerard, you have to leave, we're... All right, be it resolved that as part of the 2020 flood remediation, we approve the bid to Tricor Projects Limited for the Nipewa Gulf and Country Club Bridge Replacement and Riverbank Remediation for a total contract price of $970,028.54, including GST. Moved by. Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Sisley. All in favor? Opposed? Period. Any other business before we adjourn? Nothing, okay. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Nipewa do adjourn this regular meeting of council at 7:37. Moved by. Councillor Costinchuk, seconded by. Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Period.